We'd like to welcome people and residents of Milford here at the Selectmen's Forum. Tonight, we're going to have a forum. We have five candidates, but we do have three candidates with us tonight that are going to share their ideas and thoughts of what they're running for in the town of Milford for the selectmen. We do have Zoom as well. As you know, voting is on March 14th. It's Tuesday. Our voting booths are open from six o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night. We obviously have one of the longest hours in the state for our voting. It's at the high school, so please take advantage of getting out to vote. And to vote, obviously, to be an informed voter, you should have an idea of who the people are that you're voting for. So tonight, we have three wonderful candidates out of the five that are running for Board of Selectmen. I'm going to have them introduce themselves. Then I'm going to have our incumbent Dave Freel tell us a little bit about what the Board of Selectmen do. After that, we will open it up to a variety of questions for all the candidates. And then we'll also, at the end, have some closing comments from the candidates. There won't be any questions entertained over Zoom or, obviously, from our audience as well, because, again, it is a get-to-know-you. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to our three candidates that are here today. And I'm just going to start at the end and work our way down this way for this question, and then we'll rotate and so on like that. But, you know, Mr. Labonte, if you'd like to introduce yourself to the town of Milford.
Sure. Thanks, Dave. My name's Chris Labonte. I've been a resident in Milford for the last 45 years or so. I'm self-employed. I've been in business here for over 25 years. I built a house here 12 years ago. I live with my lovely girlfriend. I have followed town stuff for the last probably eight or 10 years. I've been a member of the Board of Selectmen for one term for three years. Multiple different committees, from Budget Advisory Committee to CIP, Traffic Safety, filled in as an interim Water Utilities Commissioner. And I'm just looking forward to running for a selectman again.
Thank you. Dave?
Thank you very much. My name's David Freel. I'm currently one of the Select Board members for the town of Milford. I've lived in Milford for, I believe, about 27 years, but prior to that, some years when I was younger. I have two children, one daughter that's in college and another one graduating high school this year. And I own a local company, Freel &amp; Son Electric, which has been in business for over 52 years or so. My father started the company in 1971, and I took it over in 2005. I've been a select member for, like I said, three years. I've served on a few committees, zoning board, planning board, currently on the Energy Committee. And, yeah, just looking forward to possibly extending it to another term.
Thank you. Ms. Sheen?
Yes, my name's Vanessa Sheehan. I'm a lifelong resident of Milford, going back three generations. I'm married to John Sheehan. We have one son, 14 years old. I serve as a state representative for Milford. I'm a Hillsborough County delegate, and I'm also on the Executive Committee for the county. I've served several years on the Budget Advisory Committee here in town. And for employment, I'm a realtor.
Fantastic. Well, as you know, we're looking at the Board of Selectmen, and that is part of municipal government. We obviously have a federal government with an executive, legislative, and judicial branch. We also have state executive, legislative, and judicial. But let's look at municipal, and let's look at what the role of the selectmen is. So Dave, I'm going to play a quick little 60-second on the hot seat with you. Tell me a little bit about how many people, how many selectmen do the town have?
So the town of Milford has five Select Board members that meet once every two weeks. And basically, their job is to come in here, meet with all the department heads on any given time. We work closely with the town administrator to make any decisions that need to be made for them to continue with their workload throughout the basic work week.
And it runs all 12 months?
It runs for 12 months, yep. And...
And it's a three-year term?
It's a three-year term, yes.
And the salary is?
$2,500, from what I'm told. I believe $2,500 a year, yes. And you're paid in a quarterly, I believe, every quarter.
And so, basically, it's a labor of love?
Yes. The money doesn't really quite cover if you were to take all the time that you put into it, because it isn't just meeting on those Monday nights for the Select Board meeting, where I thought that might have been it when I first started, became a selectman. I'm like, oh, yeah, Monday nights, I can do that. But really, there's other committees. And I think as you spend more time as a board member, you end up, you know, going on other committees and other boards, and you serve more time. And if you start adding up all that time, the money quite doesn't, it doesn't quite cover all that. But like you said, it's about giving it back to the community.
Fantastic. Okay, so now we understand the job a little bit. Chris, you were on the Board of Selectmen before. What would you consider to be one of the successes that you had whilst a member?
Probably the best one that I have is I was on one of the committees as far as for, we were looking for new employees, DPW Director, I was on the committee as far as for the interviewing and stuff like that. And that was probably one of the things that I would consider one of the most successful things, because I feel that when you're interviewing people, it takes a lot to actually, everybody brings their A-game when they come to an interview. You know, you're looking at a resume. I think you kind of have to look through and actually see, kind of weed out what's truth and what's not. And I feel that that was actually for a lot of the candidates that we interviewed and stuff. It was actually kind of a fun, a fun thing to do, and I feel like it made a big difference in the end. I feel like we hired a great director, and I feel that that has progressed the town in a very positive way.
And you had a part in that, obviously.
Absolutely. I was one of many on a committee that made a recommendation. But that was probably one of the things that I enjoyed the most, being able to be part of something of that.
Fantastic. And now, Vanessa, you're a first-term House Representative, second-term House Representative member, and so, and that's on the state level. So how do you feel your experience at the state level can help with the municipal level?
Yeah, so when I'm voting on things at the state level, I'm always keeping in mind how it's going to affect the local level. And, you know, I seek to eliminate issues at the state level that would prevent us from attaining our goals here at the local level. One thing that being on the state level has helped with is I was able to assist the library in getting over $850,000 worth of ARPA funds to help with their much-needed HVAC upgrade, saving the taxpayers a significant amount of money. So I'm able to hear when different opportunities come up that the local level, you know, we could benefit from.
Fantastic. Now, the following questions that I have are going to be open for all of us. And so I guess I'll start with Dave, but anybody can jump on in. I'd like to hear responses from all of you. But I'll ask somebody to start it, and then anybody can kind of jump in, but you'll all get a chance. So let's, why run for reelection? You were talking about family time and all this. Why run, why run for reelection? And for Chris and Vanessa, it's going to be, why run in general?
Well, that is, that is the million-dollar question. Why run again? Okay, for me, I thought that would give us a chance, you know, three years ago. It all started where I used to complain a lot about, you know, taxes and a bunch of stuff. You know, people just have conversations. And it was brought up to me, like, you know, you should run, and, you know, maybe, you know, we could, you could help with that. I have to say, it's been an enlightening situation being on the board, because it allowed me to see what really goes on behind that door, you know, where these decisions that do affect all the taxpayers, you would never know if you don't come to these meetings. I never came to the meetings. So it was, it was very interesting. One of the main reasons why I'm running again, I feel like I thought three years would be good, but I did find out really quickly that the first year was a huge learning curve. I really came in here knowing absolutely nothing. And if anybody can remember, three years ago is actually right when COVID hit. So COVID started happening when the election happened, because I was coming back from vacation in February. The vote was in March. That's when the lockdown pretty much happened. We were all going to Zoom. It was an absolute mess. So my first, my first time as a selectman, I didn't even get to come down and be sworn in at Town Hall. I think I did, but I came down, I was sworn in, but it was...
Nobody was here.
Nobody was here. Exactly. And then, then we're, I'm in my basement in a room on a computer screen, trying to learn what they've all been doing in the boardroom. It was probably easier for them, maybe, than for me, because it was, it was very difficult to get into that. And then, when the COVID restrictions were let go a little bit, and we were able to get back to the boardroom, then it started, it was a whole nother learning curve, like how are we all talking amongst, you know, each other at this table, instead of holding a button and raising our hand? So I feel like the learning curve, it took so long. I feel like the first year, the whole budget season was brand-new for me. I didn't really understand how it was on paper. It was very difficult to follow. And then, the second year, I learned that much more. I kind of knew what was coming, knew what I could say at the table and what I couldn't say. And then, going into the third year, you really feel like you've got a good hold on what's going on. So to quit at that time, at this time, if I just didn't rerun, I feel like I would not be doing the justice to the seat, because whether I get, whether I get voted in or not again, you know, I feel like the next three years, you really are getting a solid selectman. Anybody coming in here new, there's going to be that learning curve. So for me, it's really about that.
Perfect. And Vanessa, what's your motivation to run?
Well, having served on the Budget Advisory Committee, I foresee that the town is going to have a lot of challenges coming up over the next few years financially. And so I feel with my experience on the Budget Committee, as well as working with finances at the state level, I can bring knowledge that would help navigate, you know, these future challenges. And I'm at a point in my life where I have some extra time that I can serve my community in more ways.
Oh, that's wonderful. Chris, Dave talked about starting and getting up and running, but you've already been a selectman in the past.
I have, and he actually hit the nail on the head on a lot of it. When you start out as a selectman, I've done one term, three years, and the thought is, is you get elected, you come in, and you sit at the table, and you think, okay, you know, is there a three-ring binder? Is there going to be that stuff that tells me what to do? Surprise, there's nothing. You get, I got sworn in, and I sat at the table, and immediately you start voting. And like Dave said, there is a lot of challenges that you have, that I don't want to say, you're not self-taught. You, I had the joy of, prior to becoming on the board, I actually came to the meeting for years and sat in the audience. So what I call it, I sat on the other side. So I got to see it from the other side, which helps you at least understand some of the stuff that you're going through. By being on the board, it takes you time to learn. Budget process, you do go through. First year, it's kind of, you know, you look at this 15, the first year I was on was like a $15 million budget, and you're like, wow, you know, where is that? Where's the breakdown? It's tough to go through and figure out. One of the things that helped me the most was manifest sign-off. It's one of the jobs that as a selectman you can do. And you literally can go through every slip. I think Tim actually has a whole stack right there of the manifest, that those are the bills that come in. I will actually say, seeing the numbers, it actually helps you. So by the time I get done my third year, it just makes you, you've become what I call knowledgeable enough where you can sort of feel like you can move forward and become more, you know, more beneficial to the town ultimately. And, once again, it's giving back is what it really is.
Because you have that institutional knowledge.
Correct.
Perfect. All right, so let's talk about, Vanessa had brought up some questions about, well, Vanessa had talked about how there's going to be some financial issues coming down the road. So let's look at a few of these financial issues and see, you know, what you'd like to talk about. Obviously, the wastewater facility upgrade is about a $23 million upgrade. There's talk about, obviously, should people who have private wells still have to pay taxes towards that and so on? How would you respond to people who have their own well and people who are also on town water? And Vanessa, if you'd like to start, because I have Dave and then Chris.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm on town water, so...
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
I knew that.
So they have a wonderful Board of Commissioners and a great department head, working very hard and getting ARPA funds, grants to help offset some of the costs, which they're doing a great job pursuing those things. But, you know, if we go back and we look at when the wastewater treatment plant started, that was a whole-town project, like water users and, you know, non-water users helped build that facility. And I think that, you know, we're coming up with a fair and equitable way to solve this problem in splitting the costs. And I know that, that even if you're not a public water user, you still, you know, may have kids at the school that are using the facilities and, you know, shopping centers in town. So I think that we came up with an equitable solution to that.
Great. Dave, would you like?
So this was, this was a tough one, right? I mean, it's not quite $23 million. Colton's paying a little bit of share of that, but I think the number of more is somewhere around $16 million or something like that. But it's still a huge amount of money that Milford's going to have to put out. I don't know if those numbers are right, but it's, it's not quite 23 because of the different things that are being paid. The Water Committee, you know, you know, Mr. White came from the Water Commissioner, and they came down and talked to us. And originally, they really wanted a 50-50. You know, there was discussion that the ratepayers are also going to be paying, if it was 50-50, then they're really paying a little bit more, because they're paying for their water and their sewer. And there's, and if, you know, it's almost like getting double-hit a little bit. But then you have, look, I'm, I'm a person on a well, and I have my own septic. And when those things go, you know, I've had issues where I've spent $30,000 on my well, and I've spent $15,000 on a septic field. And no one's there to help those people. You know, it's kind of like what you get when you buy a lot and where your house is going to be. And that's just, that's just the game. But the infrastructure of the system really does help out the schools, the town, you know, the library, the Town Hall. Everybody really takes advantage of that. You know, believe it or not, people in the septic world, they are pumping the systems, and a lot of it is being discharged over here at the system. So we all benefit from the system in one way or another. So originally, when this was started at the 50-50, you know, then I think it was thrown around, you know, I was a little bit more towards the 60-40, 60% being paid by the ratepayer, 40 by the non-ratepayer. But I think we met in the middle, and we went with a 55, a 45, I think. And I think it's a good balance. It might not be perfect for everybody. People on each side are going to fight about it, you know, but you have to find a line that will work. And I thought that that was the best, and that's why I voted for that particular percentage draw, you know, between the two.
Perfect. Chris, would you like to?
I think Vanessa and Dave summed it up pretty well. They, it is a very controversial subject, though. You start going on the social media platforms, and there's been a lot of discussions on, you know, I, people of, I have a private well, I have a private septic, you know, why should I pay for it? And there is, you know, many advantages to the town. You know, it's between commercial, industrial, you know, by having that infrastructure in place, that, that helps bring some of those things to town, or maybe keeps them in town. And is that really everybody's version of it? Some, some people just have the thought of, well, jeez, you know, no one's going to help me with my system fails. Overall, there's certain things, the debate could go on, it's just the same as school. If you don't have any kids in school, should you still have to pay the school tax? I think ultimately, you have to sit back and you have to look at what's best for the community. And, you know, if it was 100% on the taxpayers, direct out of their tax bill, I wouldn't support that. The fact of being on the users, I, once again, am on a private well and a private septic, so I'm not opposed to the way this split is. In truth, we're all paying it still, no matter how you look at it, because even though I'm on private system, if I go to a fast-food place in Milford and I get food, I'm paying for my food, which once again is paying for that water and sewer usage. So we all pay it. It's just, how is it going to get paid? What was the big question? Overall, I feel that for how old the system is, and, you know, being put in in '78 and '79, online since like 1980 or something like that, there really has been no major upgrades to the facility since then. I was on the Sewer Commission as an interim member for three months, so I got to see a lot of the engineering reports and stuff on that. And, you know, it was a sensitive way to go on how, how do you come up with the money? And I feel that they came to a very good balance on it, I think.
Okay, great. Well, speaking of controversy, how about that fire horn, right?
Oh, geez.
As you know...
Chris Buchanan, sorry, I'm late.
Come on in.
It was a 6:30 start.
Oh, no, no, last, it would have been a 6:30 start at the original time, but because it got switched to here, we have the six, the six o'clock start.
Sorry.
No, it's perfect. Let me do a quick little rewind and catch us up real quickly before we get to the, this will give you an opportunity to think about the fire horn. So Chris Buchanan, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm moderating. And basically, tonight's forum is we'll have people introduce themselves. We have a few questions. We've only actually talked about the wastewater facility, if you'd like to chime in on that at some point. And we'll have questions over the course of the evening, and then we'll have a summary at the end. And if there's a closing that you'd like, you could do that as well. Would you like to introduce yourself, Chris?
Yes, my name is Chris Buchanan. I'm running for selectmen. As you see, I'm a chef. I just got out of work. I came from Boston. Traffic is so much fun. Sorry I'm late. And I want to be the change that I want to see in Milford.
Okay, and so, and how long have you lived in town?
I've lived in town for six years.
Okay, and you're running for both selectmen and school board?
No.
Oh, no. You're not. Sorry, that was the James Powers. Sorry.
I can if you want.
Everybody, everybody.
Run Hudson!
Let's all go on school board.
And, and so you're running to be the change. And so one of the, again, one of the things we were just talking about was the wastewater facility. And currently, there are people, you know, who are, who are looking at it as, you know, should, if you're not, if you're not, if you're on a well, if you're, you know, get your own, should you be part of that system?
I believe, just like Chris said, down there, even if you don't have kids in the school, you're still paying those taxes for the school. I believe it should be distributed equally, even if you have a private well and private sewer. And you can also hook into the system if your septic dies.
If you want to take that one. Perfect. Okay, and so we are talking, and so Chris and Dave, is that good for you?
Yep.
Just to make sure that people hear you well. Perfect, thank you. Well, welcome. And Flik, is the restaurant?
No, it's a food service corporation.
Oh, okay.
I just came from a law firm.
Oh, even better. Okay, so let's jump into the, the fire horn. Just, I don't want to get into the, you know, like what we read on Milford residents, but what I will say is this, at the end of the day, it is on the ballot. At the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen are still going to have opportunity to say yay or nay either way. Thoughts on that? And we'll start with Chris.
I think the town attorney probably cleaned it up the most in the end, that the Select Board have the ultimate power on whether it goes on, off, when they use it. The voters, I believe the voters, how can I put this, that the voters are basically giving their opinion to the Select Board. But I think ultimately, it does fall in the hands of the Select Board. Select Board ultimately is in charge, the legislative body, the voters basically approve money. And so they'll approve the expenditures, the bonding, stuff of that nature. But when it comes to something like this, this is something that comes down to be a board decision, I guess, if that's what you were looking for on how the process works.
Well, no, I know how the process works, but it will, it will ultimately fall to the Board.
Correct.
And if you were to be a board member, what thoughts would you have on that topic?
I think that becomes a pretty lengthy and depth thing. I feel that, from this past year, I feel there could have been more discussions at the board level. I felt that that kind of got rushed through. I can feel compassion for both sides. I just think the whole process on how it happened just went fast.
Okay. David?
Well, my view on the fire horn is pretty, you know, evident on how the, if anybody had a chance to watch any of the videos, and I hope that they did, but if they didn't, basically, this is how it worked with me. In the very beginning, I was for the fire horn. And I believe I voted, I was going for it to stay in being, you know, still being used in its full entirety, even though it hasn't been used in a while. And then, after discussion at the board level, I changed my vote, and it was a 5-0 vote to get rid of the horn. And then the uproar, and all the people, you know, which I did mention in one of the board meetings, saying that, you know, I really think that something like this, that's something that is important to Milford, that's been around for so long, should be something that the town people should have a say in. And it shouldn't be up to just five people, even though we were voted in. But I really think, I wish it would have had more time, like Chris said, to maybe get some surveying done and all this stuff. The horn hadn't been used for a little bit of time before that anyway. Anyway, it comes back to the Board. We tried to change the vote, or I made a motion to try to, you know, reinstate it, and it failed 4-1. And then they, you know, some residents took up arms and got, what do you call it, signed a petition, signed, and started a warrant article. And that's where it started the whole thing. And then the residents' page went haywire on the whole thing. And everybody's got their own, their, their personal right to say what they want. I'm not for, I don't think it has to be all on or all off. I think that there's a balance that can be met here. And I'm not trying to be insensitive to the family that's having issue. But there are a lot of people that it means something to hear that horn. It means something. It's been here for so many years. It's been here for over a century. And I think that there should be something, you know, there should be a balance. And I believe that wisdom negotiating, with talking with the family, and with talking with the new board that sits here, I think they should come to an agreement that makes everybody a little happy. I don't think it has to be an all-on, all-off thing. And, and, you know, whether the Board finds a way to maybe make it sound once every year as a memory, a memorance of it, or whether it's a once-a-week kind of thing at a certain time, you know, maybe it's something that happens during our big festival, pumpkin festival, that happens once a year. There's a balance there that it isn't forgotten and just thrown away. And I think that's something I would like to have seen. And instead, I felt like, as a board member, it was just slammed down and shut. And I didn't think that that was the right course of that particular topic.
Vanessa?
Yeah, you know, I would really like to see a compromise happen in regards to the fire horn. I know that people are passionate on both sides of the issue. I have some concern that we can change something that's been part of our town for hundreds of years just by one person, because does that set a precedent if one person doesn't like something else? Are we going to change, you know, something that's happening in our town? So I really hope that, well, you know, we're going to see what the voters say come March 14th, and we're going to see what the Board says, but I'm hoping that we can find a compromise.
Perfect. Chris?
I actually agree with everybody here. There, there has to be a compromise somewhere, so both, both sides could, Cannon will be happy. Maybe on really significant days, the Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, 9/11, just throwing five days out there, really big days, Pearl Harbor, really big days that shook this country to its core. We can remember them by that alarm.
Okay. As you know, there's been, there's been contractors who have drawn up plans for the downtown improvement and development. Thoughts on the traffic flow and the pedestrian improvements? Anybody want to start that?
I'll gladly start with that.
Perfect.
I'm personally not a huge fan of a lot of them. I definitely feel that we could do some big improvements in the downtown as far as lighting, as far as to make pedestrians noticeable on our crosswalks. I'm not really a fan of, I'm going to say redoing as much of the parking. I get it that we have a lot of parking that may not be to current code or current statute. I'm not really in favor of turning Middle Street into a one-way street myself. I kind of think that, that the parking over there could be kind of tricky. I know there's been conversations about back-end parking and stuff, and that's a big change to people, you know. And I understand that there's different towns and municipalities that have it in the state or have tried it. But, but I think that that's a big change. And I think Milford's a community that, we're not afraid of change, but I just feel that Milford has never been one that, you know, bang, we're going to change everything right today. You know, Milford, I call it, everything's a process. Everything has to change slow. It, it's just who we are and what we are, and that's what kept us great. Going down Nashville Street, I wasn't a fan of the turning lane. Yes, county stores can be hard to get out of at times. I just don't know, once again, that that is the solution to it. I do feel pedestrian-wise, I think there's many improvements that we could do as far as illuminating crosswalks, different lighting in the oval possibly that lights things up more to make things more prominent. I feel that, you know, obviously, there's stuff we can do, and there's definitely money there to do it with. It's just a matter of finding what works for the community.
Vanessa, what do you think?
Well, I was here the night that they had the people in talking about the plan. I have concerns, and concerns were voiced with people that drive large trucks around the oval and how it's not going to be feasible. And I'm concerned that they do want to take away some of our parking, and we have a major parking issue downtown. The businesses are struggling because people can't park and go in to shop. So I think that, you know, it really needs to be planned well and really thought out. and um, really thought out, and input from the public who drives tractor trailers and, and big vehicles around the oval need to, to speak, and they need to be listened to.
Okay, Chris, you fought traffic getting here?
Yes, I did. Um, to be honest, I'm not familiar with the changes that are being proposed. And by me speaking with not knowing everything,
Perfect.
it would be
Yep.
a misjustice.
Not a problem, David?
Oh, well, I was able to hear that, um, contractor that was out for that whole, what do you call it? The plan for the downtown.
Presentation.
Yeah, presentation, exactly, thank you very much. Um, on both accounts, I actually went down when they had the, a little workshop where everybody, you know, speak their minds on it. And a lot of people raised a lot of concerns, um, in the oval area from what they were trying to propose. Uh, I definitely think that there needs to be, like Chris said, some, some changes in the oval. I think the best thing that we could work on is there's a few parking spots that are really close to the, um, crosswalks, which don't come into compliance, you know, in today's standards, and probably would pose a little bit of a, you know, a safety issue. I definitely am not for a, a, a one-way road on Middle Street. I think Middle Street should stay a two-way road, how you do the parking down there, whether you do parking on one side, and keep it a two-lane road. I mean, there's ways you could maybe, I don't know if, if there's enough room, I can't remember if that was, that was not one of the options. Um, so, you know, they, they, they would toss that back and forth as far as, you know, do we do back-end parking, you know, you know, on the diagonal going down that road? And I just, you know, you're losing so many spots in the actual oval with the, with the presentation, and they're making it all up on Middle Street. And not that that's a bad thing, but I, I just think that the way of the flow around the oval, that Middle Street going both ways is an important, uh, important thing to try to hold on to. Um, I don't know about on Nashua Street as far as the turning lane. I, I think there's an issue there that can be worked on, because there are times where that traffic flow will completely stop when people are trying to turn, and there's just a constant flow of traffic. And with a turning lane, it would allow the flow of traffic to keep going, which would be good. Um, so, I, you know, and I know the sidewalks there are a little bit narrow. I think there's definitely some work that can be done, like Chris said, but I'm not for the actual plan as it stands right now. But I think that whoever sits on the board should definitely, you know, try to, you know, weigh the pros and cons. I think the lighting downtown could definitely be better, I, you know, there's some dark spots out there. Those light fixtures are actually old metal halide fixtures with just an LED replacement bulb in it, they're not a true LED fixture. So the LED fixtures will actually throw a little more light. You could go with something a little bit less decorative and get some more downlighting. I, I would think that downtown is like a romantic area, though. I think the lighting itself, the fixture shape, I think that's nice. Um, but there's a couple spots where if they added a light or moved the light into another spot, it might help out a lot.
Well, nothing says romance like being with the one you love on the bandstand.
Yes. Oh, way to come into the bandstand.
And so I didn't know if you believe as, as a Board of Selectmen, the board should have some skin in the game on the restoration of the bandstand. And anybody, I feel like you've just jumped on in earlier, so would you like to start off on that, Chris?
I would love to, uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I think the board should have a say, but also, we should throw it out to some of the artists and the contractors, and have renderings and drawings, and have their input as well. Um, maybe there's a unknown artist out there that has a wonderful idea for the bandstand and what it could be.
Well, we know it's not a gazebo, don't we? But Vanessa?
Yeah, um, I wholeheartedly support the warrant article to restore the bandstand. I mean, that, the bandstand is Milford, right? And so, um, the bandstand along with all our historical buildings in town, you know, we really need to, as a town, um, budgetary to, to have skin in the game, and to keep our historic buildings and bandstand maintained.
So the bandstand for me, uh, when that first came to the board, um, I was against. And the main reason for me being against it this year was because of the severe budget crisis that we're in right now. And I've been a Selectman for three years, this is the largest budget increase that I've seen sitting at the table. And I just thought it would be something that we could put off for another year, or even two years. I don't think that the bandstand is going to fall apart and just cave in. So for me, it was to try to maybe push it off, um, maybe take extra time to try to raise funds. They've already done a really good job of raising some funds, it started out with a ninety thousand dollar project. I believe they raised, the last time I heard was around forty-five thousand dollars, I don't know if that's about right? Thirty-five, forty, somewhere around there. I mean, I know they could probably, you know, and that's in a very short amount of time. Within a year, they were able to raise that money. So, to me, I would, it, it's not that we, I don't support renovating the bandstand. The bandstand should look the way it looks now, and, you know, they're not looking to change the look of it. They're just trying to try to, you know, you know, sure it up. And there's a lot, there's a lot of rotting wood that needs to be worked on. I don't think the stage, you know, it was tossed around, could be doing stages. I don't think that's the right thing, because, you know, you get contractors in there, they're gonna wanna just get the job done and get it over with. They're not gonna wanna come and replace this piece of wood, and then come back and do another one, they're gonna set up and get it done. But having said that, the reason why we were back and forth on supporting that, or at least I was, was because of the, the, the budget.
Then just, just to go to the budget, um, last year was about fifteen million, this year's about eighteen million?
Huge.
So you're, you're looking at about a three million dollar increase?
I don't know if it's quite three million dollars, no, it's, it's like,
Just under a million dollars.
It truly is.
Oh, about a million dollar, okay, sorry, my fault.
Yeah, it, I believe the budget, if you were to take everything into account, because there was some money that we had appropriated from this year's budget into, you know, we took some things that we could spend this year on. And, but at the end of the day, that's all gonna roll in next year. And so, really, right now, you might be looking at, I think it was two hundred and like, oh, oh god, I forget the number now. It, it's more like around eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars, really that it's off. But we've shown it on paper to be less. But that's a little bit, it's not a smoke and mirror thing, it's just that we took funds that we had extra this year, we used it to apply to things that we, we could, for next year, and that allowed the number to be lower. But then next year, those numbers are gonna be there again, and we're gonna be fighting them that. So, that's why the bandstand, it's not that it doesn't need to be done, I just thought it was just something we could maybe put off. But I'm all for it, I think that we should still keep fundraising for it, and if the, if the taxpayer says, let's go for it and do it, it'll get done.
Okay, Chris?
I, I actually fully support the, the warrant article. Um, I personally feel that the town, um, that's a town obligation, think about it, that, that is our town logo. So, you know, it, it's one thing that you definitely wanna take care of. Um, I feel, from the fundraising aspect, I, I think we've been very lucky to have as many people contribute to it as, as what we have. I don't know how much more we'll actually get off donations, because we've had a lot of the big organizations that have given big donations, where you only have so many big donors in a town. Um, and I, you're typically not gonna get them to continuously repeat, to donate to the same thing. Uh, but, but I, I do feel, I feel now is more the time to do it. From a budgetary standpoint, I agree, it, it's an increase right now, but I also think if you start looking down the road budgetary-wise, um, you know, like David stated, you know, some of the money from twenty-two's left over got used to twenty-three, to shrink the number on what the increase looked like. We've also deferred numbers out of our twenty-three budget to only put half of it in twenty-three, so that's gonna pop up in twenty-four. So I feel twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are gonna be some hard budgets.
And actually, the eight, why I was thinking of the eight, 'cause I was thinking of the school budget, which is gonna be like forty-eight million.
And I wasn't even going on the school side, absolutely.
So you add forty-eight million onto the sixteen million, and
Yep.
you've got a heck of a budget.
I'd like to just say one more thing about what Chris said, 'cause he said it's something that we should definitely maintain. The one thing that I am, 'cause I'm, I'm in construction, and what, what it blows my mind is that we actually got to the point where we had to spend ninety thousand dollars. So like, if it, it truly is Milford's, like, like iconic symbol, why are we not paying attention to it more? Why, why is our town administrator or our DPW directors, why are they not, and I'm not talking about the current ones, like when you just started, right? I'm talking about a decade ago. Why are they not looking at this thing and coming up with this stuff so that it can be fixed on a smaller scale? And not wait for it to be half-rotted? I mean,
How did we get to where we are today?
Why are we where we are today? If it's that important, why wasn't it important ten years ago? And why isn't someone looking at that structure? You know, like, you know, uh, i- if there's vandalism or something done, that, of course, that gets fixed. But I think that, um, you know, as a town, our, our department heads should be definitely looking at something that important. You know, there's other buildings that are important also, and they should be looking at these things and nipping it in the butt early, and not waiting for it to build up into a big project.
Well, speaking about departments and department heads, David, and anybody can jump in on this, maybe Vanessa would like to start. Um, Milford is struggling right now with trying to retain, um, municipal employees. Um, what can we do?
And that's a, a big driver of the operating budget, um, is, you know, raises, bringing employees, current employees up to, um, where they should have been. And that is, I feel, one of the major things, crises, that the board's gonna have to address, is finding and retaining personnel. And, um, I know that currently the town is looking at a possible four-day work week.
That's gonna be my next question.
Okay.
So, but, but for retaining employees, we, we're down a couple police officers, we're down DPW people. Like, like how do we, are, are you saying we, we wanna get competitive salaries? What, what are you, what's some ideas that you might have?
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to bring the celebrities up so they're at least comparable to other municipalities around us, 'cause we're losing a lot of our employees to other municipalities. And, um, ideas like a four-day work week, I know that the town is looking at it, they're gathering information to see if it's feasible, because it, it needs to, it needs to be balanced, it needs to work for the residents of the town and also for the employees. But it's ideas like that that I would consider and, and talk about, and have the conversation about, um, to retain our employees and to attract new employees.
Okay, um, Chris, would you like to?
Um, yes, we have to be competitive with, um, the other towns around us. We can't compete with the city, we just don't have the funds. Uh, but we can compete with some of the towns, we, we have to, to keep our people here and to draw, like you said, draw more people in to apply for those police officers positions, of the DPW positions that are available, and make it, um,
And the struggle people have told me is that they, we train them here, and then they leave to somewhere else.
Yes.
So we go through all those costs, but anyway, Chris, would you like to?
I, I will, I guess I wanna start out with, with the initial part of your question, if Milford's struggling with it. I, I think that that's actually a much larger scope. It, it's not just Milford, it's not just New Hampshire, it's actually municipal in general throughout the country. So, we, we're not alone in our struggles with everybody. Um, do I feel that, you know, we obviously have to be competitive on wages? I, I feel in any job market you're in, whether you're in the private sector, the government sector, you, you have to be competitive. Um, I also feel that one of the big things, and I question whether it has something to do with it. I think culture has a lot to do with stuff. Um, you know, we have what they, they say is like a twenty-eight percent turnover rate in town, um, in twenty-two. Some of that I question, some of it was because of pay. I think that there was a lot of it that wasn't because of pay on, on why they left, I, I believe there's always an underlying story. Um, I, I think that, you know, you, you have turnover with some employees, and if you look at Milford, we actually have a lot of employees that have a lot of tenure with, with Milford, that, that have been here for many, many years. Um, and it's finding that balance in between. Uh, Milford has always been known as a training ground, I think we always, um, we're, we're gonna have that issue of being a training ground. If you look at where we are in size of municipalities in the state, we're in like number seventeen or eighteen or something as far as size. So, you, there, people are still gonna try and go somewhere, whether it be a police department, you're gonna come in, you're gonna go through the police academy, you're gonna stay here for a year or two, and, and then you're gonna try and go up through the ranks and, and kinda filter around. Um, loyalty, as we all know throughout the world, loyalty has kind of dropped in a lot of places, that you will now go, some people may leave for fifty cents an hour more, some people may leave because the benefits are better. Some people may actually leave because they wanna go here where the culture is better, um, the pay not be, may not be as good. But, but they're more relaxed, they, they, they know what they wanna do. I think that Milford actually has to sit and look and, and really define, is it just the money why everyone's leaving? Or, or, you know, a lot of these towns that we've lost employees to, um, look, look at their ads on what they have out there. You know, um, some of the people, you know, you, you'll see, we've lost these people to a certain town, but yet if you look at that certain town on what they've been advertising, that job is always being advertised repetitively, meaning the turnover is just as big at that town a- as it is here. So, truthfully, if I could identify what the key factor was, I think that that would be a hands-down win. I don't know. So, so I think that that still takes investigation amongst other people, um, to, to figure out why is, why it's like that. But I don't just believe it's a Milford problem.
David?
I'll agree totally with that, I don't even think it's a municipal problem, I think it's a total worldwide problem. There is a huge problem trying to get employees. I mean, the construction industry is just as difficult there as it is anywhere else.
I'm in the culinary field, and it's just as bad. It is brutal.
It is, and, and I don't know if a four-day work week is the magic bullet, and that's, you know, I feel like it's an idea. An idea can be brought to the board, we should talk about it, we should discuss it. I don't think at all it should be jumped into, because it's such a huge change. Um, I'm also, like I said, I'm in the construction industry, and I have to deal with the town hall. Um, I deal with multiple towns all around the state, and there aren't that many, especially the size of Milford, that are closed for five, uh, closed for a day out of the week. There are smaller towns, like Ahmad Vernon, or New Boston, or, you know, whatever, that might close on one day or have like, you know, a couple days where they're not open till noon. And you get used to Deerfield, I mean, we're not a Deerfield, we're Milford, and like Chris said, with, with the amount of people that we have here. I think that when you come into that position, and you're working for the town as a town employee, you're here for the people. The building should be open for the people as much as possible. Now, history says five days a week, that's what it's always been, does that have to stay there? No, it can go to four days, it could go to four and a half days. There's, there can be a balance here, and you can try to figure it out, but it can't just be, let's try it, let's just, all right, let's just try it at four days, hold on, let's just try it at four days, and then, if it doesn't work, we'll go back to five days. You know, and I know, and everybody here knows, that's not gonna happen, 'cause once you hire people at four days, that's where they're gonna wanna be.
But the reason people are thinking about four days is to be open at night as well, to kind of extend the hours over the course of the four days, rather than the nine to five, or the nine to three, third, four o'clock that you would see. So let me, uh, what do you think Vanessa on that? I, I know you, we, we were kinda going around there, and you brought that up. Um, would, if, if there was evening hours as well, um, which might be available, you know, it might be beneficial to some people in town, um, somebody driving in from Boston, you know, is that a good idea, a bad idea? As long as the hours remain the same, would it be okay to go to a four-day week, maintaining the same amount of hours of a five-day work week?
Right, and I know that, you know, that's all part of the discussion, um, and I do, I do think that being open later, I think would be a benefit. Um, and I know, uh, that there's a survey going out, and we're still getting feedback, um, from the residents to see, you know, their input. So, I, I think that there's, there's a way we could work it, and that could benefit everybody, it's always good when there's a win-win.
Okay, and I, and Chris, I know you're kinda late to the game, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I totally agree, I would love to see the building open maybe an hour later. Stay open a little later at night, because as you see, I got here around six o'clock, six thirty, I got here at six thirty. And if I needed to do my registration or anything like that, I would be out of luck. Or switch it to a, um, s- Sunday, Monday off, and do Tuesday through Saturday, to have everybody's, uh, access to
So a Saturday, like a weekend?
A weekend, just one, one weekday, maybe five hours, that's it.
Uh, Chris, you haven't chimed in on this one yet, I?
I have not. Um, I, I think that there's a lot of, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. Um, if you really think about it, you know, I think it's been, I'm gonna call it flushed out, that by closing one day a week, the savings for what you're gonna have by having town hall closed for a day is gonna be minimal. Meaning your operating costs are gonna be the same, real, really, what are you doing? It's not like you're gonna shut the heat off in the building, yet, you know, you, you have to maintain a certain level of occupancy out of it. You know, now, currently, town hall opens at eight in the morning, and think about it, for the most part, these, I say these lights, these lights, the lobby lights, between Monday through, let's say, Thursday, they're probably all on from eight in the morning, i- until nine at night, give or take, you know, for how many different committee meetings there are. Um, I, I guess I feel I don't know that there's gonna be a savings, but part of my question on some of it, and I've had people ask me, why can't we, you know, you can offer a four-day work week for an employee, but you can still have a service-based open five days a week. And, and I get it that there's some departments that only have one person in it, um, so maybe it's time for a change somehow. May, maybe we have to not so much add employees, but is there a way, and I'm just throwing this on the table as an option, is there a way that you could take, whether it be a floater, and, you know, whether it be, um, for a tax collection, or whether it be for assessing, is there a way that, that you can go through and do it, and still, um, still maintain the service to the public? You know, with, town hall, municipal service is a, a service-based business, meaning it, it is here to help the happenings of, of, um, the community. Um, so to me, I still feel, I, I'm not opposed to having later hours. Um, you know, the proposed hours that were currently proposed keeps town hall open till five thirty. I don't know the I don't know if five thirty's even enough. Um, you know, would, would I be okay with like something opening later in the day? You know, whether, you have like transfer station hours, if you want to say, where it's kind of spread out. You don't run your traditional eight to four thirty. Um, I think once again that there's still more information that could be collected to, to see how that pans out.
Okay. Um, speaking of businesses and so on, obviously, attracting businesses is important to, uh, balance the tax rate. Ideas at all about trying to attract businesses? Is there any things, I, I know Vanessa, you were talking about having part, like on your, on your website of, of having partnerships with private and public entities and so on. Would that attract businesses, you think?
Yeah, and I, you know, I think it's an idea when I think of public-private partnerships, you know, I think of our parking situation. I mean, could we partner with, um, a company right here on the oval? But, um, I think he's a candidate.
James, I have a sign for you. How are you?
I'm gonna share. That may work with two of us right there. Andy, will this work with two of us?
Nope, nope, we got this, we got this.
He said we're good, Dave.
We have this one, we're switching.
I'm sorry Vanessa, we're talking about partnerships and you're talking about parking?
Like parking, that, that would be an example that comes to mind about, you know, how could we partner with a local business and, uh, you know, how we could benefit them, they could benefit us, opportunities like that.
Okay. Um, Dave, any ideas of trying to attract businesses?
Well, I think the town already does a pretty good job about that, right? So they, they did pass, um, some kind of legislation a while ago where, uh, you know, it's two years ago.
Two different times.
Two different times we did, yes. And it is about, uh, you know, if, if a company, you know, comes in or if they were to do an addition or a big rebuild and they're gonna be bringing more jobs into the area, that they can actually defer their taxes, you know, for, or not defer, maybe even get a, a...
Tax break.
Not defer, but tax break. For, I believe, five years, which is a huge, um, um, plus for a business that wants to come in here. So, I think the administrator usually does a really good job. I know before Lincoln, it was, um, Mr. Bender did a pretty good job trying to work on, um, businesses and, and I'm sure anybody that's coming in here is gonna do the same kind of thing. And I think, uh, Lincoln Daly will probably do a good job trying to do that.
Okay. Chris, any ideas of trying to pull businesses in?
Yep, uh, tax break incentives is also a good one, but that also hurts the town in the lower end. Because we're not pulling in that revenue that we need to supply them with the fire, with the police, with the municipalities. Uh, this is something that has to be thought of.
Okay. Chris?
I, I think Milford does do a pretty good job as far as what we have for a commercial industrial. You know, we, we do have a couple of areas of town that I'm gonna say are still slated for commercial industrial development. Um, the question is, is does it become feasible to develop it into that? What, what are we gonna have to put into it in order to get these, um, businesses to come in? You know, if, if we're gonna put in ten million dollars and it's gonna take us fifteen years to recoup the money out of it, our investment into it, meaning does that become, are you better off to stay the way we are? Or, you know, are you better off to, I don't wanna say focus, um, you, you have a lot of dynamics. You, you have commercial, you have retail, you, you have industrial. Um, I, I think that there's changes in the economy that we're in that's gonna change a whole lot of things. You know, we, we've changed a lot over the years from mom-and-pop shops to, to more corporate stores where your mom-and-pop shops have disappeared. You know, I think back to when I was a kid in Milford, you know, the grocery store, you know, the pharmacy. You know, you, we had a shopping center down the street that had like one of everything in there. And now, um, the dynamics of that, that shopping center has completely changed from what it used to be. Um, I, I think we just have to somehow learn how to adapt, um, a- adapt to the current philosophies, I guess you could say.
James, welcome. Let me play a quick little one-minute, um, put you on the hot seat round to get the people to know you, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, James Powers?
Yes.
How long have you lived in town?
Uh, since two thousand and fourteen.
And, um, reasons for running?
Uh, I wanna see a change in the town. I wanna benefit our taxpayers, you know, I see a lot of different things. You all are talking about businesses in the area. And if you actually look at the statistics, I believe nineteen ninety-five was the last time we had a major business come into town. So if you look at that, that's, uh, almost thirty years from now. Uh, if we're talking about benefits to the town, when it comes to business, you're looking at thirty years of lost businesses. Uh, we had Stop &amp; Shop that was here that ended up leaving. Then we had the Dollar Tree and Ocean State come in. We had a local, uh, beer store that left and that's also vacant right now. And, uh, there was a, uh, kind of a axe-throwing shop that moved in next to it. So, you know, I think overall, uh, has the town been soliciting to larger companies to get more information, uh, to attract more? Uh, the ten-year tax plan that, uh, Mr. Freel was talking about? You know, that, that's a ten-year tax plan. But is that something that's going to benefit only individuals in town? Or is that going to be benefit attracting companies to come to town? So, I just wanted to add.
Yeah, no, that's great. You, you broke my heart about the beer company, I forgot. And you're right, I used to frequent that and, and they had a selection that you wouldn't, well, you probably would believe because you probably also maybe have frequented. Um, just to catch up a little bit, um, uh, actually, look, I'll, I'll get you in on, on a lot of the things that we're talking about. Um, we just finished talking about the four-day work week, which I think you heard.
Yeah, yeah, I was listening to it, uh, my way over here. Uh, being a municipality, we're supposed to be open to the public. I think a four-day work week would not work for individuals in the town, the taxpayers. We have, what, just over sixteen thousand, uh, individuals that live here? Renters, so they need to be able to get here sometimes on Friday. Maybe they have Fridays off. If the town goes to a four-day work week and they have a four-day work week, they're not gonna be able to get what they're gonna need done.
Awesome. Okay, very good. Um, so, you talked about the sixteen thousand people that we have in town. And I'm just throwing this out there to everybody. Um, so how do you balance keeping the residential taxes low? Um, but then trying to provide more services for the diverse population? I mean, obviously, I've been here since nineteen ninety. Um, and I've seen a number of different groups and businesses come in, um, services come in, um, emotional, mental health services as well. Uh, how do we balance that and try to keep the, the taxes low? And anybody can start with that. Or is there no way, we just have to recognize the growing pains?
I'm gonna go ahead and say after what I've seen for the last three years, I don't see how it's gonna happen. And, you know, you come into this position thinking that you're gonna make a change and you're gonna, you're gonna vote in a way where our taxes are gonna stay low and they're not gonna climb. And then you, you deal with, you know, you see what has to happen on the back end of it and, and how everybody's getting their COLA raises and the, the departments, you know, are, are growing. The, the police department grows, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's very hard to hold back and keep it at a stagnant level. I, I'm shocked, and I, I mentioned this to all the, the selectmen and, and people that come here. You know, why are we not able to be a zero, uh, balance, you know, a budget increase? Why is it every single year, obviously you gotta have COLA increases, right? And then your benefits are always going up, so there's always increases and stuff like that. So there's always gonna be something. But when you get these big-ticket items like this wastewater treatment plant that just, you know, shows up on your door, you know, and, and thank God that's gonna be in about four years, you know, it isn't gonna start affecting our taxes for a while. Um, but something, you know, we do a good job about getting Warner Argos out there and try to like saving money for the rainy day, you know, saving for a big project. It's like, you know, if you're gonna buy a fire truck, you can save for that. But I just don't know how, honestly, after three years, how you can get your taxes to go down. I don't care what businesses you bring in here. It's not gonna lower your taxes. It just, it, it just isn't.
Vanessa, you've been on the Budget Committee?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the goal is to keep taxes reasonable while making sure the needs of the town are met. Um, we can't have a town that's falling apart, right? And it takes money to run a town. So, I think finding efficiencies in operations, um, town operations is, is a priority. Um, I know that being part of the Budget Committee, um, there's been great discussion on, on things that, you know, have been questioned like the time clock. Like, is that an expense that's really needed as only one department is using it? Um, so I think it's seeking efficiencies, keeping the taxes reasonable and making sure the needs of the town are met.
Awesome. James?
Um, twenty twenty, what was it, sixteen million dollars? And then, uh, the budget went down to eleven million dollars, I believe, twenty twenty-one.
A little louder side in here.
I believe the budget went down to eleven million dollars, twenty twenty-one.
I don't think so.
It's never gone down.
It's never gone down.
Down. I do believe during COVID, the budget did go down.
I don't believe so.
Well, if I'm wrong, that's okay.
Go ahead.
I would admit that I'm wrong. Um, I think it is reasonable to keep a budget manageable. Um, one thing that I see as a problem is municipal bonds. It seems like every type of project that's gone out goes to municipal bonds. I'm not sure if the taxpayers are aware, down the line, municipal bonds need to be paid and interest needs to be paid on that. And that is whose responsibility? The taxpayer. I think if the town wants to decide to go down that alley of continuously going to municipal bonds to fix a Band-Aid problem just so they can get things done, I think that's wrong. Uh, managing a budget doesn't mean you get to continuously borrow money from the taxpayer or the states or individuals that decide to purchase municipal bonds. Uh, and, you know, that's, that's just not good management. Uh, I know quite a few of you have businesses and I guarantee you would not run that business in the same manner.
Well, Chris, how would you run that? No, just kidding. What, what do you think on this topic?
I think that as far as to, you, like Vanessa said, you always wanna try and keep the, the budget increased as minimal as can be. My first thought on a lot of it comes down to, um, I've attended budget advisory for I don't know how many years now. Um, I was on budget advisory prior to becoming a selectman. The whole time I was a selectman, I went to budget advisory and still have continued to. Um, through Milford's budgeting process, I would actually love to see more, um, I, I call it more accountability in budgeting. I'd like to see where a lot more of the money goes. Um, when, when you look at our budget that's posted on the website, you, you're gonna see a ninety-page document. And there's really only one page in that budget that matters. And it's the last page, it's the bottom line. We're an SB two town, so really it doesn't matter. What any of those line items in between come down to, the town cannot overspend that bottom line.
Well, I'm gonna get to Chris in a second, but let me just follow, because I do know you go through all the manifests and that's a hobby of yours.
Yep.
So just a real quick, do you think we get a bang, our, uh, do you think Milford gets a bang for its buck?
I personally think that Milford actually needs to be proactive and we've kicked a lot of things. Um, we've put them off and we have a lot of stuff. I, I don't think that we budget enough money for our roads. Um, I, I think that we're actually falling behind, um, with, with the amount of money that we budget just for our roads, uh, our buildings. Um, you, you can't keep going down to, like James said, you, you can't always necessarily rely on a bond to, to go through. I understand that, you know, we're dealing with numbers that are big enough that most of the time we have to bond because it, it's just not feasible to go to the taxpayers and say, okay, we want this in cash. Meaning the tax impact is gonna be too big. But, but, you know, look, look at just like what renovations we could do to town hall as far as, you know, there's talk of a roof, the HVACs, HVAC system. Uh, there, there's a lot of things I think that Milford, do we need them all at once? No, we have to find balance and that's where like the CIP plan comes in. What I think strategic planning, I, I guess maybe we could do better within this town.
Okay. Um, Chris, what do you think?
I actually agree with David. I don't see any way to lower the tax budget. Uh, because everything costs money and everything is going up. As we feel in the grocery stores and everything else, even with utilities. They're going through the roof now and we have to pay our bills. And unfortunately, the pack, the taxpayers help do that.
Vanessa, I, I'm just gonna come back and dovetail to you on the same question I asked Chris because I know you're on budgeting. Are we getting a bang for our buck or do you, do you agree with Chris that our roads are in disrepair? But are there any other areas that we're, we're lacking in? Or are there other areas that you think we are actually getting a good deal on that?
As part of the Budget Committee, we sit down and we listen to each department. They bring forth their budget, their needs. And so, each department, I feel, does a tremendous job in trying to do things fiscally conservative as possible. I would agree with Chris though that, um, we need to, um, this deferred maintenance has to stop. We need to maintain our roads, our bridges, our town buildings, the bandstand. Um, we need to make that a priority.
Okay. We've talked a lot of heavy issues here. Let me throw a happy issue out to you, um, just real quickly, it's a quick answer, but you go off somewhere and somebody says, where are you from? Like, oh, I'm from Milford, New Hampshire. Oh, what's so great about Milford? How do you respond to something like that? I'm just gonna go this way. Chris?
Um, Milford is a wonderful, small town. And coming into the center, the oval, it's a wonderful experience. You, some cities and towns don't have that, that beautiful oval that you can experience.
Okay, Vanessa?
I'm gonna say the Pumpkin Festival. We have the Pumpkin Festival. And along with that, I mean, we have wonderful, um, band concerts in the summer, community activities. We have a great rec department that does multiple things to, to, you know, build community. And, um, yeah, it's just the charm of we have a small town.
That somewhat special dance was a huge hit, that, that DJ was amazing. Dave?
Oh, boy, for me, I don't know, that, it's tough because I've called Milford my home for what, thirty-some-odd years? Twenty twenty-seven as an adult and five or six when I was a kid. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of years and so it's, it's home. So, what makes it special? It's home. I mean, we, I think we have great restaurants. I think we have a good dynamic of businesses and, and, and things for people to do. Um, you know, the, the charm of the downtown area is, it is really nice compared to a lot of towns. I mean, I get the benefit of being able to work in a lot of the different towns and we really do have something special. Um, you know, people are really good too. I mean, for the most part, I mean, you can watch that Facebook residence page and, and think that we're all ruthless. But there's a, you know, you would also, you know, if you're walking down the road, someone is gonna say hi and someone is, you know, we're out there for breakfast and you got this wonderful breakfast area and everybody's out there getting together and saying hi. You don't see that in a lot of towns, you truly, truly don't. So I think that is a, a good part for Milford. But for me, it is hard to think of it being anything special because it's just, it's just all I've known, really.
Very good.
Milford is all I've known, but when it comes down to it. And what is great about Milford, not only what we have to offer, but our location. You know, we're, we're close to Boston, we're close to Manchester, you know, we're, we're close to the ski areas. We, we have everything there, but I think what we do have around here though is we have a small-town feel. You know, we have a lot that's offered from, uh, businesses, the, the community itself. There, there's a lot of things that we can get. There's a lot of people that move to Milford. They may not work in Milford, they may not work around, uh, work in or around Milford, but they, they like it here. They, they come here, this is where they rest, this is where they play. Um, you know, it, it, it's just a nice community for what we have. And even though, you know, our, our tax bills, we may get our tax bills twice a year and say, geez, you know, this is high. Sometimes I think we take for granted what we have. Uh, but when, when you look at it, we, we have a lot of things to offer in Milford. We, you know, the size that we are, I think our biggest struggle is our growing pains. You, you know, we, we have this group, as I call it, meaning you have some people in town that are like, you know, Milford needs to flourish, Milford needs to get bigger, Milford needs to be a city. Then you have other people that, you know, Milford needs to go back to be the small little town. We gotta drop population, we gotta find the balance, the, the healthy balance in the middle of, of where we can be.
James?
It's hard to top all that.
No, it's covered. Great answers.
Uh, yeah. Pumpkin Fest is the only one in the state right now. Uh, I would agree, you know. Milford is close to the city and it's close to the country. A lot of people, especially where I live, they like to come out here because of the, uh, all the trails. We see it, uh, I literally live right next to the rail trail and we see people all the time, all summer long, coming in. I think what makes it special is a lot of people like the quietness and the ability to go out on their own.
And, and how long ago, how, how long have you lived in town, you said?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen. So where were you before that?
Uh, I was in the U.S. Coast Guard, so I lived in Durham. Uh, I had a residency in Maine and, uh, that was...
So what made you come to Milford, New Hampshire in twenty fourteen?
My wife and I, we were having a newborn and Milford, we saw a house on Molindi. Originally, we looked at it and the pictures didn't really look that great. So we kind of passed on it for a little bit and then we came back and looked at it again and ended up buying it. And honestly, it was because of our price range.
And the pumpkin fest.
And the pasta.
Absolutely. Okay, so back to, back to a, a, a serious question. If you are, you know, there's two seats that are open. Getting onto the Board of Selectmen, what would be what you would consider to be your pet project for the next, like, well, like, for your three-year stint, is there something that you would attach yourself to that, you know, I wanna get this done? You were talking earlier about, you know, the appointments and so on. Is there, is there something that you would wanna be, you know, a pet project over the next three years that you would take an interest in as a selectman or a select person? And go ahead, Chris.
I, I guess when I became a selectman, my, my big focus really was transparency. It, it still actually is my main focus. But one of the things that I'd actually like to tackle going forward is like I started to talk about as far as the budget process. I would actually love to go through and be able to track our budget to be able to say, what we don't do in Milford, believe it or not, is we don't do line transfers. So you, you have, you know, this big budget and if you take money out of this budget to, this line item to spend over here, we don't track them. So, so to me, a lot of the times, I feel I would like to see more of that in place to know exactly where the money's being spent. You know, the question comes, do you always have to raise taxes? I don't know that you have to raise taxes. You, you, I feel, or I question whether you could reallocate the money to see what line items are being spent at the, you know, are they being appropriated at the level they should be? Or are you always taking out of this line item to bring over here to this line item? I, I guess I, I'd like to see the, the budget aligned more to know where money's being spent and where more money is needed.
But just following up something you said earlier, it's a bottom-line budget anyway.
That is correct.
Does it matter?
I, I think the difference comes down to is legally, it's a bottom-line budget. But if you wanna do it and be, meaning conservative to know where your money's going, to know where you need improvements, I feel that can go hand in hand. It, it's not the fact I'm saying defy the bottom-line budget. Because legally, you can't overspend the bottom-line budget. What I'm trying to say is to see where the money goes. You know, there, there's many things in that budget that, I'm not necessarily even saying cut the budget because you could have a line item that's inflated by fifty thousand dollars. You know, a perfect example, if you look in the twenty-three budget, you know, there was a forty-five thousand dollar cut to electricity this year. Well, that doesn't necessarily sound right considering electric rates are going up. So was that necessarily inflated before? For what reason? Was it intentional? I have no idea. But, but to me, to bring it back down to what I'm gonna say, realistic numbers on, on where they are. You know, if you go through our budget now, when you look at it, you'll, you'll see the adopted budget, you know, what was actually spent, you know, over the last, they do it like a three-year comparison. Those numbers don't line up in there. You, you should be able to go back on a two-year budget, I mean, two years prior and say, okay, there was fifty thousand dollars appropriated in this line item. How much actually got spent out of it? That's what I would like to see. And it's not that we've done bad accounting or whatever. I just think it's cleaner to be able to focus to see once again for strategic planning on where we need to put more money.
Okay. David, any ideas that you'd like to champion? Now, you're an incumbent, so the next three years, is there any pet projects that you would want?
Well, I remember this question three years ago and I had no idea what I could say, you know. And believe it or not, an actual individual project, that's tough. I think for me, it's more just coming here and being able to keep continuing working on all the projects that are going on that I actually have been brushed upon over the last three years. There are some projects that, like a bridge that we talked about three years ago that still has not been done. And I, I'd love to learn more about why some of these things are taking so long. You know. It's hard to say like, oh, I'd like to attack the traffic, not the traffic, but the, the parking. That's a, that's very difficult. You can sit there and say all day long, you wanna do that, but good luck. You know, so I'd rather be more, you know, open about it and just say, I don't, I don't think I would attack one particular thing. But I think I would like to come in here and continue working on what I've been working on for three years. Unfortunately, obviously, when I came on last time, we had a new town administrator. That administrator didn't work out and now we have another new administrator. And I'd like a chance to work with somebody a little bit different because I feel like the administrator that we had, that, you know, we both were learning at the same time and I personally think that it might be better this time. And I would love the chance to work on something that I feel is being dealt with more on the backside than, than it was before. So I, I think that would be better.
Okay. James, anything you'd be passionate about?
Yeah, I have quite a few things. First thing is overall getting taxpayers more involved. You know, every year we vote and there's approximately just over three thousand people that vote. Why is that? That I would like to change. I don't know if that's gonna be through advertising the town has to vote and encouraging more people to vote, sending out emails instead of letters, you know, that can be a cost-saving. So that, that would be one thing. Another thing would be to, if it's feasible to kind of copy what Bedford has and have a, have just one singular building for police, fire, ambulance. I know we're kind of on the move towards a full-time fire department. That's wonderful. We have sixteen thousand people in town. I think it's important, but I also think that maybe merging the ambulatory with the fire department as with most municipalities have. They have firefighters that are paramedics and they have an ambulance and they go out. So why are we not doing that? And that would be something important to look at and see if it's feasible and if the individuals in town would approve that and have a main facility for that instead of three separate facilities and three extra costs. I would also like to see whether or not the Board of Selectmen can make maneuvers to kind of reel in the school board and the school budgets. You know, I understand there's a lot of controversy there. I know that I'm also on that. And I also know that he is as well. I think it seems to me in town, people have mixed feelings about the school and how can we be more involved and also help our taxpayers that way.
Okay. Vanessa, is there any projects that you would like to have, be passionate about?
Yeah, community development. I know that we've just started a new committee to do a ten-year plan, how we envision Milford. And so I'd like to be part of that, you know, planning, vision for the town. And also getting more town volunteers, you know, encouraging people to, to be part of things and learn. And I, I think that, you know, there's a shortage of volunteers, so just an outreach for that.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you. Yeah. Vision of Milford would be something that I would be passionate about. And also maybe getting more volunteers, like she said, to help us, the, that are good in what they do, to maybe do, do the bandstand or do some of those repairs. Just like President Carter did with Habitat for Humanity. Brings people together for a common cause to get the job done, to give someone a home. We could spin on his idea to do something with the bandstand or something of that nature.
Fantastic. Okay, we're at that point where if there's a topic that I have not brought up yet that you would like to address, this would be the appropriate time to do that. So I, I will open it up if, if there's anything that anybody would be like, oh, here's just something I would like to throw out there. Vanessa's the one with all the notes, so I'll ask Vanessa first.
Yeah, you know, one of my goals is to keep Milford's unique charm and history. And, and you had asked me earlier, how would you do that, right? So it's things like supporting the pumpkin festival. It's things like supporting maintaining our bandstand, our band concerts. You know, it's those things that bring the community together.
Okay. And just to follow up if I can, a lot of those, there's a lot of warrant articles right now for Labor Day parade, for fireworks that got zeroed out, as you probably noticed. Would you be in favor of maybe having like an omnibus bill type thing where we would have a slush fund of, of, of funds in the town to try to do these things?
I'm never in favor of omnibus bills.
But in the sense of having a slush fund to maybe take care of a number of different?
But what we have seen, we were gonna just talk about the pumpkin festival again. That was something that the town funded. But that slowly was taken off the town budget, right? And it was, it's self-sustaining now. And I would love to see that happen. Maybe down the road, if, as the rec department grows and their funds, that they could take over the band concerts or something like that. But it would be something, you know, to have discussions out to plan. And I would like seeing something like that happen with these different events that we have.
Okay. Does anybody wanna follow up on that or?
I, I don't disagree as far as, you know, if it was possible that recreation could take over some of the things. I also feel that we have some warrant articles that, I understand they were taken out of the budget per se to give the voters the opportunity to vote if they wanted them or not. But some of them, I, I guess to me, near and dears, you look at some of the, the parade support, you know. I always look at it as it's a warrant article, but does it really need to be? You know, for, for the warrant article for the parade is like six thousand dollars or something like that. I guess I look at it between our emergency services and I understand the budget's tight for everybody. So I'm not trying to say squeeze this all into your budget. But having one less warrant article, if you were to break that up amongst how it's going to do it and put it into your budget. I, I guess I feel with the amount of money that's left over with the budget typically at the end of the year, if you could take one warrant article away from the voters where they didn't have to come in and be like, oh, wow, we have forty warrant articles this year. We have thirty warrant articles. Warrant articles weigh a lot on people, not, not only because of the financial pressure, but it's a lot to actually understand. We, we have people that don't follow the meetings. You know, they, they may get the voter's guide. You know, I, I see that a lot of people got their voter's guide in the mail today. And I think that a lot of people are happy over that because they used to get it in the mail or the newspaper before. And last year, they did get, some of them got mailed out. But voter's guides are like extremely important to people. And I understand it's been on our website. People could go to our website. But there's a lot of people in today's day and age that don't necessarily either don't have the time or don't take the time to actually go hunting for the information for stuff like that. So to me, like the, the voter's guide getting mailed out to taxpayers, to me, was an extremely important thing. Because when you see it come in your mail, as long as you're not one of those people that just take it and automatically sling it into the junk mail side, the voter's guide has a lot of great information in it, which explains those multiple, multiple warrant articles.
Well, let me follow up then if I can.
Sure.
So with, with, with the ballots on both the school and the town, it, it also has recommendations. It says the, the select, then, you know, favor this, the, the budget committee favors this, the school board favors this, the school board budget. Is that a good thing, bad thing? Should, should we let the voters decide without that? Or are we throwing that out there? I mean, is that an influential thing to actually get the voters comment?
I feel it becomes influential myself. I, I do know that there's people out there that look at it from like the board recommendation. They look at it as, you know, they elected the people to the select board. So therefore, you know, obviously, whether it was your candidate that you voted for that got on the board, you know, you, you may look at one individual, you may look at three individuals on the board, you know, and say, okay, they, they, they think it's okay. So that may, that may persuade you to vote for or against a warrant article. But still, there's people that don't necessarily know what they're voting for.
And that's why I ask, like, is that?
Correct. Unfortunately, you can give the information, you can put the information out. Granite Town Media does a fantastic job as far as recording our meetings. You know, so if you can't watch them live, you know, you can always go on demand on the internet. You can watch them on, on Comcast Cable. There, there's definitely ways to do it. Like Mr. Powers said, you have to get more people involved and the question is, how, how can you?
Krispy Kreme donuts would bring them, but it just doesn't. Breaking my heart.
Going back to like you're saying, though, the recommendations, some people do look at it that, you know, our elected people are in there and, and we trust their judgment. You know, sometimes I feel that the voter's guide, you know, if there's a three-two vote on something from the board, I, I don't know that, does it always list out in there who?
No, it doesn't say who.
See, see, to me, that's where I almost feel if you're gonna have it, then really you should be putting who's for it and who's against it. Because if you have two trusted or three trusted or four trusted people, or you trust all five of your board, you're gonna know who, who you're gonna tend to agree with, I guess.
Is there anything we haven't brought up? I know you, both you and James, unfortunately, were a little late to the party. But is there any topics, I know you said you were listening on the way here. Anything you haven't heard tonight that?
No, everything that I've heard is exactly what I've wanted to talk about. Thank you for doing it.
Chris?
You're my favorite customer.
James, you were uber-linked to the party, so I guess if there's things you'd like to.
Unfortunately. I guess just to follow up, you know, the horn situation. You know, I understand it's disconcerting to some individuals, but unfortunately, I would, I would approve the, the horn. I just wanna put that out there. You're never gonna make anybody, everybody happy. So it's, it has to come down to you're making the majority happy over the minority. You know, you can't, if you have a couple of people that speak the loudest and they want something and then you kind of take it away from everybody else.
Well, let me, this is the government side of me. This is the Dave Alcock's government teacher. If, and, and when you said majority and minority, you are an elected body. If you get an elected body, as an elected body, if the town, if the selectmen become an elected body and the majority of the town says we want the horn to go back to the way it was. As an elected majority, even though you still have the power to say whatever you'd like, would you go along with the elected majority because that was the elected majority who voted in favor of the horn? Or if the elected majority says, no, we want you to squash the horn, even though that's not what the warrant article says? But if the elected majority says we'd wanna squash the article, even though you might be passionate about playing the horn, would you, would you follow the, would you follow the elected majority or do you sit there and say, well, no?
We follow what the voters want. I mean, there have been times where we'll just take a fire truck, right? I'm really passionate that the fire department wants, you know, has a new fire truck, but the voters voted down. I can't say, well, you know, I'm passionate about a fire truck, so here's your fire truck. We have to.
Because this is kind of a unique situation. There's no question, right?
Follow what the voters want, you know.
So you would follow whatever the voters decide on that warrant article? Although the warrant article just says, but the, the school, that, that, that selectmen will commemorate or respectfully preserve.
But if, but if the warrant article was to be defeated, then it would be basically, right now, the warrant, the, the horn does not exist.
Right.
Okay, so if it's defeated, then the people are saying, no, we don't want the horn back. If it, if it passes with flying colors of three thousand people or whoever we get that day, then yeah, the, the people are saying that, they're not saying that they want the horn back a hundred percent of the time, but they're saying they want the horn, now it's up to the people that you voted into this, into these seats to talk about it and come up with, you know, come up with a, a good, you know, you know, balance of, of what's gonna work for the people in the town, the, the, the child that's having the issue and, and other people that are having issue with it. There's a lot of people that live in the downtown area that I'm short. If I was living anywhere on the oval and nothing went off, I would be jumping out of my chair. But I'm lucky enough that I'm a mile away. And when that horn goes off, I can barely hear it when I'm at home. So I don't know about bringing the horn back a hundred percent of the time. I don't even think I would vote for that. We've heard from our, you know, the fire department and our police department, it's just, it's not needed for those things. But the noon time blast or maybe every Saturday at noon time, there's definitely gotta be a balance there. And I hope that whoever sits in these seats, you know, after the election, that they actually listen and maybe have a little bit of a conversation and they'll just throw a vote together in, in two minutes because I think it needs to be talked about.
To go back to your original question, Dave, of do you go along with what the voters say? In this scenario, I think it's tough because I think this warrant article is not cut and dry. People that vote no don't necessarily mean that they don't want the fire horn. You have, I have spoke with many people that they're considering voting yes on the fire horn because they want it to be preserved and not to be dismantled and taken out. So the intent on that warrant article could be taken different by, it's all in the eye of the beholder on how you're reading it.
I haven't heard, though, if we can speak freely about it. I don't know if I've heard on any of the meetings that they're talking about dismantling it and removing the horn. The horn would just stay there.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily been said.
I think it was mentioned that to preserve it, maybe if we could get it out of there. If, if the horn was truly to go away, maybe there was a way we could take the, the, the main parts of it and memorialize it someplace. I think that was mentioned.
I think at the, at the, the meeting, at that little reception, they were talking about the parts and not having the parts, right? Wouldn't they say it was so old?
It needs maintenance. It just needs to be maintained.
Once again, comes down to maintenance. But, but I think not so much going for, you know, I, I'm not trying to insinuate the board ever said they were gonna take it out or, or any department said they were gonna take it out. I, I think that it's unclear to the way the warrant article is written. I think if the original warrant article was to stay in the play and to keep the fire horn, you know, fully active, operational, I think that was a pretty cut and dry thing to say, okay, people either want the horn or they don't. I feel with the way this word is now, that still doesn't tell you, that doesn't tell you which way the public wants to go. I will tell you, the hardest thing in the three years that I was on the board is I will tell you, the hardest thing in the three years that I was on the board is you don't actually think it's going to come, but there's days that you actually have to vote on things that you believe, you know, you should have. I can tell you that there's, there's been times where I've actually voted against my belief because it's in the best interest of the town.
And that's what Vanessa was saying about the fire truck.
Exactly. And that, that, that's a hard, that's a hard choice to make. But to me, when you're sitting at this table, it's no longer about you. It's about the community and what's best for the community.
Chris?
Uh, it's all, all about we, the people.
Program I ran.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I honestly didn't know that.
That's why I love you, Chris.
Apparently I'm your straight man.
No, it's perfect.
No, uh, if the people have spoken, therefore it is. And I would, um, listen to the voters because they put me in office, so.
There you go.
That's it.
And James?
Uh, I agree with Chris that it's a difficult subject. But my opinion is, you know, if it gets voted down, my opinion is, is it required for state emergency notification? That is my issue. You know, if we have Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant, is our horn, uh, added to some sort of notification requirement that's held by the state? Has anybody ever looked into that? You know, I know voters could sit, sit there and say, we don't want it. Well, if the state comes back and says, you have to have it, then it's a known issue. Like, I know Chris and, uh, Dave have been on the, uh, board and you're currently on the board. Has anybody asked that question? Is it required by the state for emergency notification?
Do you know that answer?
I, I would say no, it's probably not required or would have already, it would still be in effect, it would still be there. I believe the.
Plus not everybody can hear it, like you can barely hear it a mile away. I'm by the high school and I don't even know what's going on.
No, I mean, the horn was really in, I think it was introduced into the town because we're a quarry-built town, right? And the quarry, we had workers that were, they'd use it to, to sound off at lunchtime.
Quarter past, they let her know that they're walking across the beach.
And also like, hey, there were probably at that point, probably all volunteer fire. So if there's a problem, they write the horn off and then people come to the fire department and grab the buckets of water and run down the road and get their horses lapped up. But, I mean, there, that's probably where it all stemmed from, you know? And then it turned into just, uh, you know, part of Milford. It's just always been used. But now the cell phones away, I mean, look at, when was the first cell phone? I mean, I, are you talking probably nineteen ninety something? Six, I was using a bag phone. I mean, so it seems like not that long ago. We're only talking twenty-something years where technology has gone so crazy where we got police and fire that when the radios weren't working, they just grabbed their cell phone and they're communicating that way. Do we need a horn to that purpose? I don't think so. However, I think it serves a purpose and I think it definitely, you know, for warning people with the trafficking out of the oval. But again, I don't know if that ever will get brought back to that in its entirety like that, but entirety.
Because nobody works the quarries anymore.
Exactly, we don't have that, right? It's still a working town, but I mean, again, you know?
Okay, so is there anything else that anybody would like to add on, on, this is your last time before we do a closing remarks from each of you? Is there any other topics that people felt passionate about? Good. All right. James, would you like, I feel, you know, I'd like to turn, let you have the first lead on, on any closing, closing remarks. So, so anything that you feel like you would like to get out there as well is a really good opportunity.
You know, I, I haven't been a board member before. I would appreciate it, you know? It would be a sacrifice to my family because of the field that I work in. And that would be dedication. I would like to see different things happen in the town that would get more, more individuals involved and, um, bring in more business to the town. So that's, that's why I'm running, so.
Fantastic. Chris? We'll just kind of go right down to that.
Okay, Chris. I, I feel for all the years that I have followed all of this, the three years that I had on the board learning, I, I, I would love to continue to go back for another term. I, I feel when I ran last year, I came within a couple votes. Couple votes, you know? I, I feel like the, the original thing was by five, you know, and then I found another vote and then three got lost. So I'd like to tell everybody I lost by one. You know, in the recount, it, it was great to go through the whole recount process. I feel that there was just a lot of people that, you know, I was on the odd year of where you only voted for one and I had a lot of people that voted for two, which canceled stuff out. I, I would love to be able to come, come back, um, and, and help out the town that I live in and the town that I love. And I'd, I'd appreciate, you know, you guys' vote on March fourteenth.
Well, um, I look forward to coming back again. I, you know, I, I didn't know how I was going to react after being in the, you know, I, I sat in your seats there, you know, like three years ago and I didn't know anything, what was going on in the town. I feel like it's been a, it's been an enlightening road. I'd like to keep going down that road and keep building on what we've been working on for the last three years. Having said that, it's good to see just residents of Milford sitting here at the table, willing to take that seat. And win or lose, I don't think we really lose, right? So it'd be, you know, what would be a loss? It would be a loss if I was sitting here by myself and there was nobody in those other seats and there were two seats open. That's a problem. So seeing people sitting at the table, I think Milford's going to be in good hands. I just think, uh, they'll go up and make a good decision. I look forward to coming back if they have me and if they don't, then I'll come down and maybe visit and, and, and be part of the process a little bit on the other side.
Fantastic. Vanessa?
So my number one goal at the state level and at the local level is what's best for Milford, what's best for the residents. And that's going to be my goal and priority if I'm elected to the select board.
Fantastic.
I'm just going to have to say ditto with her. It's all about the people and what they want and how can I serve them? The people of Milford, this wonderful town that we live in. Trying to, I always, I will always put them first. I will never view, vote on how I feel. It's what's best for the town.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, um, thank all of our candidates that have, uh, been here tonight and participated in our forum on how to get to know you a little better. I am going to follow James's lead a little bit and be, and manage our town just a tad. We do have, um, a very small turnout. There's no question about that at our voting. We have roughly about eleven thousand voting members in our community. You're talking about roughly a forty-eight million dollar school budget and about a sixteen million dollar town budget. Every framer, every politician, uh, over the years, for the past two hundred years, have always said the government that affects you most is the government that you're closest to. You're going to be talking about a sixty-four million dollar combined tax budget to your community.
Plus warrant articles.
Plus warrant articles. March fourteenth, from six in the morning till eight o'clock at night at the town, at the high school, um, on West Street, are our voting hours. If you can't make it on March fourteenth, that Tuesday, you're able to get an absentee ballot all the way up to the day before. So all the way up to March thirteenth, you could come to the town hall and pick up an absentee ballot and also cast your vote. I will always say that I give the highest praise to anybody and to follow what Dave was saying. Anybody that does throw their hat in the ring to run for public office for the extremely large sum of money that you'd be getting, um, you know, you're absolutely correct. We, we have five absolutely wonderful candidates that would make the town proud. There are two seats that are open this year for the Board of Selectmen, three-year term. So please come out on Tuesday, March fourteenth, um, from six in the morning to eight o'clock at night. If you're an unregistered voter, all you need to do is to bring a, a driver's license and a piece of mail identifying that you live in town. If you don't have a piece of mail, they'll have you sign an affidavit swearing that you live in town. You can be registered within minutes in this town. We have same-day registration in the state of New Hampshire. It's extremely easy to vote. So please come on out. You're talking, like we said, a large sum of money that's going to directly affect your taxes. So I want to thank you all for taking time out of your day tonight, today and being able to catch in when you could, um, to give the town a little glimpse of the people that they would be voting for. This will be rebroadcast on Granite Town Media. You can also go to the town website and also Granite Town Media website and share the link with anybody that you feel, uh, would like to also see tonight's discussion. We want to thank you and, um, you know, let's keep Milford proud. Take care.